Others, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. All right, hello everybody and welcome to the twenty twenty-one City Council Forum. My name is Parker Aiden and I am the Executive Director for the Pokahontas Chamber of Commerce and I will be moderating this forum. We have one candidate joining us by phone because she had a prior commitment and that is Heather Hall. So she is just sitting here with me on the table. But then the rest of our candidates are here in person, so I will let them start and introduce themselves, as well as why they are running for City Council.
Hi, my name's Dean Zetlaw and I'm running for City Council.
Just put it up.
Can you hear it now?
There you go.
Now I gotta start over. Hi, my name's Dean Zetlaw and I'm running for City Council to help the community and give a little bit back from living here all these years, so that's why I'm running.
My name is Jonathan Rickers. I'm actually originally from Rawl, but me and my wife moved to Pokahontas here oh, six months ago, seven months ago, but been from the community, went to school here. Running for City Council just because I plan on living here the rest of my life. I want my kids to grow up here and I want to have some input and be able to kind of try and help navigate this community into a pretty good future, I guess, and have a say in what happens and kind of give back and really, you know, be a part of what's going on here more than just living here, so.
My name's Tom Reese. Grew up here, run a business here. My family's still all around here, my kids are here. And basically, I like to see Pokahontas prosper, keep our community clean, strong, and hopefully we can lead it into a good future with our decisions that we make.
All right, and then Heather, we will have you introduce yourself and answer why you are running for City Council.
Well, I'm Heather Hall. I'm a teacher at the middle school high school. This is my first time here there. I have a husband and two kids that are currently still in the school district. And I run for City Council because I feel like my experiences growing up in a small town, very much like Pokahontas, as well as what I see in the school and through volunteer efforts, I could make a difference in our community.
All right, so with that, we will move on to the next question. And Heather, we'll have you start this question. What experiences and qualifications do you have that you feel will be helpful and relevant if you were elected on the City Council?
Well, I guess I started answering that already. Because of my background growing up in a small town, I've seen a lot of the struggles that small towns can have. And what I see in the school and volunteering through extension and other entities, I think that I have a pretty good grasp of a lot of what's going on in the community and what could be improved and what is going great in the town and what I'd like to see continue on.
All right, now the three of you, feel free to go how you want in order. And if you want me to repeat the question too, I happily will.
Well, I grew up in Rawl and me and my wife moved here in nineteen eighty-four. So that's just a little thing I forgot to say before. But my experiences, I serve, I'm serving on the Conservation Board right now. This will be my eighth year. I'm also the head of maintenance at the hospital, so I run that department. I've been on the Peasants Forever Board as President for a long time. And I also have a business here that's been in town for fifteen years. So I think I make good decisions and think a lot about what we're talking about before I make them decisions. So that's what I think.
The reason why I think that I would be an acceptable person to be on City Council is just because of the type of person I am and I'm willing to see both sides of an argument. You know, I might go into a conversation and have my, what I think of that, but I'm always willing to hear what other people have to say and try to make a rational decision on what, on what the best outcome would be and see other people's side of the story. Yeah, I got a couple of businesses in town and feel like have been able to deal with a lot of different personalities. And I feel like in a position like this, a lot of the struggles you have are dealing with different personalities and being able to, you know, like I said before, hear people out, make sure the situations don't get out of control or, you know, emotions don't take the best of you. And I feel like in the businesses that I've had, the life experiences I've had, that I'm well qualified to be able to do that and have reasonable conversations with people. So I think that's a big factor in a lot of these elected positions is just being a people person and being able to hear people out, so that's my reason.
I guess, I've lived in Pokahontas. I work in Des Moines, I work for the Des Moines Register and Circulation. I'm in many, many towns and I kind of run my own water business here in town. I have for the last eight years. I've been on the City Council for the last four years. We've improved the water treatment plant, the sewer system, and we're soon to going to be working on the, our water with a three-stage reverse osmosis. So which I think will be great for the city going forward. So I'm just here, I keep an open mind. I listen to our people that are out here coming to me and just try to provide, provide the best knowledge that I can and look for the best solution. And we base our decisions off of that.
All right, so the next question that we have for each of the candidates is what is your vision for the future of Pokahontas? Tom, you can start since you're the one holding the mic.
I guess my vision is we want to continue to grow, we want to maintain. As I'm in a lot of these smaller towns, you see the storefronts closing. You might have one business, you might have two. I would like to see our main street full. That's our ultimate goal, to get people to come to town. And, you know, we're going to have to work on our, I think, our marketing to get those people to come. We have the school system, which is a great school system here. And going forward, you know, everything just keeps shrinking, so we're just going to have to market or target the people that we want to come here and so our town continues to grow.
Yeah, I believe that what Tom was saying is completely accurate and what I think needs to happen before. We need to target people who move back here. There's a lot of interest in people my age and people I talked to that I went to school with and that are living in different communities right now. There's a desire to move back here, you know, it's their roots where they're from, it's why I moved back, why my brother's back, my sister's not very far away and we love it here. And people do love it here, but we need to get people incentivized to come back here, to have quality of life things that make them want to live here, move back here and raise a family. Because ultimately, if we don't have the population, if we don't have people, if we don't have businesses, like he said, it's, you know, we're going to lose things, it's going to diminish and then it's going to be tougher for me in the future. I'm a, come from a farming family, I'm rooted here. This is where I want to live, where my grandkids, my kids, you know, everybody down the line, I hope they see a future here. So if I want that to continue or that to happen, we really need to focus on getting businesses back here, getting people back here, getting the excitement around Pokahontas. And I think there is that, like I said before, we talk to people from the community that are, you know, of my age, starting families, there's something about moving back close to home, being close to family, and you just have to provide them with an opportunity and, you know, build things and, you know, form a pathway towards something that gives them an opportunity to make a living and I think they will. So, yeah, I think jobs and businesses and growing this community is huge and what my main priority is moving forward.
I agree with exactly what them two guys said. I think the main thing for us right now is getting young people to come back to the community, bring their kids and stuff. And I think that starts with parks and swimming pools and all that stuff. It's keeping them up, making the community look better so they want to come here and see. There's some young people I know that came here to look at the parks and everything to move back. And if that stuff ain't kept up and stuff, they go to other towns that it is. So I think that's just one of the things I think we need to work on. But I agree with these guys, we need to keep the business coming to town, keep what we have, improve on what we have, so.
And then Heather, that question to you. What is your vision for the future of Pokahontas?
I feel like a broker record, I agree with everything everybody said. I agree that, I think we need to keep the tradition that keeps people like Jonathan coming back to Pokahontas that the memories that they have of the town they grew up in, but yet trying to do some of the things that the gentleman said to try to attract new people to the community, whether it's businesses or residents to our community to help us grow even stronger.
Okay, so with that, we will move on to the next question. And this is kind of the reverse of the question that was just asked. So what do you believe is the biggest challenge our community faces? And then Heather, if you want to kick that one off, we will let you.
I think it's population, trying to get people to stay here and/or come back or come here to Pokahontas for the first time. I also think it's a struggle getting businesses that can really bring a large group of people to the community. Yeah, we're going to build a family dollar here, but is that going to bring a lot of people here? We've got to figure out things that can, that we can sustain, I guess, and that will make us special and different from those in the area.
I think to, we need to concentrate on small businesses coming to the area. I'm not too sure if we can get anybody that will come that's a big business with a lot of jobs, but we got to try to get quality jobs to come here, to bring people back, keep people here. I think that's one of the biggest challenges.
Yeah, I would agree with what they said too. I mean, it's difficult at times and it might be controversial to say, but I feel like in the past, from the people I've talked to, sometimes people have really good ideas, right? And they want to do something that is good for the community, move something forward and sometimes they get met with some resistance. And unfortunately, ninety-eight percent of the people might be for that idea or helping them out, want to see that move along, but it's the two percent that stick out that are negative towards that. And I think that as somebody that would be on the elected position in City Council, you know, we really need to encourage people that come to us with ideas and see, okay, how do we take that idea and make it come to fruition? How do we, you know, take your business that you want to do and, you know, get examples of other businesses in other towns and how that's worked for them and implement it here? And, you know, there's a lot of businesses in town you see for sale signs. We need to figure out ways to be proactive on that and figure out, okay, how do we find somebody to take that business over? So it's not a for-sale sign, we're scrambling to find somebody to, you know, come into that position and all those things. I think it's a whole community, it's not just City Council, it's different positions too. And everybody needs to work together. It can't just be, I'm on City Council, you know, I need to do what City Council needs to do. If I need to help out with the role in some other position, maybe it's best for me to help out with that and open to a conversation that, you know, brings people back. But it all comes back to the population, to businesses and to quality of life. That's the main struggles here that we need to improve on. And we need to look at other communities that are doing a good job and, you know, mimic them and steal their ideas. We've talked to other communities about different things that we've tried to do and everybody's always receptive to help somebody out in a small town. Nobody sees it as competition, you know, rely on those other resources you have and try and improve what we have working on here.
Well, I did a good job covering all that information. I'm just going to add one thing, I think our housing. I think we need to, some secondary living, some lower. We've got a lot of high-class houses. I think we need to look at building some medium-income housing so we can get those younger families here and then get them to work. Ultimately, I think that's our goal, is to bring the young people in, target those people like Jonathan was saying. I grew up here, came back here and I love, I love small town and my childhood's that. I think a lot of those, there is a lot of people out there who would be willing to come back here if we could provide them an opportunity.
All righty, so the next question we have is you may have heard about the walking trail project that the Chamber of Hometown Pride and a lot of community volunteers are working on. Together, what is your opinion of that project? Tom, if you want to start since you have the mic, we'll let you.
Yeah, I'll start off. I think it's a very good idea, recreation, young people like recreation, they like to ride bikes, they like to walk. It's a way for the family to get out. I'm a hundred percent behind that, I think we need to do that. And I know I was with a gentleman out of Eldora yesterday and they're working on like a sixty-mile trail from Eldora to Marshalltown. And it's supposed to be all paved and everything and I think we need to move forward on those opportunities.
Yeah, I, you know, a young family like myself and my wife's pretty active and I have young kids, something like that for us is, is an idea that I'm supportive of. We would utilize it a lot, but, you know, we have to take the opinions of the people that oppose it too and see why they oppose it, understand those and see if we can come to a common ground or make them, you know, not make them, but have a conversation with them that might steer them towards, you know, getting on board with it. You know, some of the guys or some of the people that might oppose it are people that may not utilize it as much, but if we turn the conversation from them utilizing it to their family, kids, different things like that, maybe they'll see it in a different light. But I think that it's something that everybody needs to work together on. It's got some momentum behind it and we just need to kind of fuel that flame and keep it going and try and get, you know, the vision accomplished, so.
When it comes to the walking trails, I'm also a hundred percent behind that. I have been for a long time. Few years back, couple of years now, they brung it to the Conservation Board and we discussed it there on how we could, how we could help with that. So without going into detail on all that, I think it'll bring people even from out of towns to walk on it, which they stop up at Pizza Ranch or any other place to eat. So it brings income back into the town. I think the walking trails is a great idea.
And then Heather, your answer.
I think it's a great idea. The hometown I came from, we converted an old rail line to a trail. At first it was a cinder trail and then eventually it became a, it was a great utilization of that space. Lots of people walked on it, biked on it. I believe it's about twenty miles. It goes from Bondurant to Baxter. And people from the community use it and then visitors come and I think it's a great interaction to get people into our town and possibly see what we have to offer. And who knows, maybe they'll decide to move there or build a business there because they see, you know, all the great things that we have. So I think it could be a great asset for our community.
All right, so now we're going to move on to some more public questions, I guess, that we have received. And then some backup questions that I've written down as well. So one of the questions that's on the sheet is for Jonathan, Dean and Tom. And that is, how do you think being a business owner in town will benefit you for being on City Council if you were elected?
Well, for me, I guess, for my business, you know, you have to make good decisions all the time or you're not in business very long. I think the people skills they have with customers helps a lot when it comes to communication and all that kind of stuff. So I think them are the two things that would be a benefit.
So is the question, how does a business owner, you know, benefit us being on the council or will being on City Council benefit my business?
How do you see owning a business benefiting you or, you know, what attributes does it give you that will help you if you were elected to City Council?
And I think the main thing is just being, having to deal with people and having to deal with some of the struggles that, you know, running a business have. Running, helping run a town or a city is a lot similar. There's a lot of parallels to running a business, right? You have finances, you have to keep an order, you have different people that are coming in and out of that business. You have to, you know, please, I guess, for lack of a better term. And, you know, everything that goes into a business is just very similar to helping, you know, run a town. I guess we're not necessarily running it, but having ideas and, yeah, helping run, run this town, dealing with different people. People walk in your door when you own a business and sometimes you have situations and personalities that are not very fun at the time to deal with. And we're going to get questions and people that have different ideas and butt heads with us, but we're going to have to gracefully handle those situations and not lose our cool and put on a good face and try and see their point of view and, you know, take that in consideration. Because at the end of the day, we're a voice for everybody else out there. We get elected because you guys, whoever votes for us, thinks that our views align with what they see for the city as well. So at the end of the day, we're working for the people in selected positions. So, yeah, running a business, you're working for the people too. I rely on the community to support my business and it's the same in an elected position.
To me, it comes down to customer service, it's just the relationship between myself and the customer, satisfying their needs, listening to them. And I guess that's basically what I have to say, I guess, on that question.
And then Heather, since you're the only teacher that is running for City Council, as I'm aware, unless any, or see, moonlight as a teacher. How do you think being in the school system, you know, would that give you any sort of benefit or insight to being on City Council that you could bring to the table?
I think being a teacher, especially in the middle school, high school, dealing with those young people that are getting ready to go out into the adulting world, I see some of the needs they have that maybe somebody that doesn't have as much contact with them on a daily basis puts me. I also think that just all the juggling of all the responsibilities of being a teacher helped me, you know, with a lot of the decision-making that would have to go into being a City Council person.
All right, so the next question that I have for all of you is what is your favorite aspect of the community? And Heather, if you want to start with that, we will let you.
I have to say that when my husband and I first moved our family to Pokahontas, it obviously was for a job for me. But it's amazing how anytime any of our family members that are from their town, they really enjoy being in Pokahontas. They love visiting the various businesses and how welcoming people are and they love the small towns as well. But all the convenience that people try to provide through our small businesses and it's just, it's just a very safe and welcoming area.
I think Pokahontas is, to me, it's pride. We take a lot of pride in our community, our school system, our churches, our community rallies when we have an event in town. I just think we're extremely positive here in town and that's what I'm proud of.
Yeah, I guess I would say the most thing, the thing that I'm most proud of or hang my hat on the most about Pokahontas is just the people here. What I ran into with, you know, the businesses that I've had in my time here has just been a lot of support. I made the reference earlier, you know, sometimes you'll run into a situation where, you know, something go on or an idea or something and ninety-eight percent of the people are positive, right? Two percent of the people are the ones that kind of stand out sometimes, but you really got to fall back on those ninety-eight percent of the people that are really supportive. And people support people in this town. I see, I've seen it time and time again and I think there's just a lot of great people here and I have family here and so I hang my hat on it being a kind of a family-type atmosphere in someplace that I'm really proud of and really excited to raise a family as I have young ones coming up and it's just something that means a lot to me, the people here.
I think the good thing is how friendly everybody is here. If you, you know, get on hard times or just need a helping hand, how many people will actually support you, come up and talk to you about what's going on? So I think it's just a friendly atmosphere community we have here, so that's what I think.
All right, next question is, if you were to be elected into the City Council, what is the biggest issue that you would focus on? What's the first issue you would want to tackle that you feel like needs changed? Whoever wants to start, I will let you.
I think the, one of the things we should have to look on that could change is, is maybe on how we promote different businesses here, how we maybe can help them grow, the ones that are already here I'm talking, and get them to grow and what their needs are. That's one of the things that I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I think if I'm elected, I think the easiest thing to do and the most reasonable thing to do would be tackle some of the issues that we've already, you know, set in place, the walking trail that we talked about, make sure that we, you know, see that to fruition or figure out what the situation of that is and then, you know, listen to the people a little bit. I unfortunately haven't had a lot of time to talk to a lot of people, you know, it's probably fresh news that I'm running for City Council. But I need to hear what the people want and what their views are and what their kind of immediate ideas are and kind of take that in consideration. But it's all going to come back down to business and people and, you know, getting people back here. So whatever avenues we can, we can take to do that, you know, are what I'm going to be bullheaded about and try and, you know, put my best foot forward and tackle those issues, so.
I'll agree, I think the big thing is get Main Street full and working targeting to get people back here, the young people. I think that's what we need to target. And the other things will all kind of fall in place. There's not a lot of issues that we can control, we just, we help the government run. And so our main focus, I believe still, is keep the Main Street full and to get a marketing plan to get, to target those young people, to try to encourage them to come back home.
And then Heather, your answer to that question.
I obviously agree with all the gentlemen's answers. I guess one of the big things I would like to maybe mention is communication. I feel like communication is a problem everywhere. I hear all the time about lack of communication. Oh, I didn't know such and such was going on. Oh, I didn't know that, that businesses was looking for people to hire. I didn't know various things. And so I think that we need to work on the communication. We need to work on communication about when City Council meetings are so people can come and attend them and give us information that they can't read this directly. I think we need to communicate all the wonderful things going on in our community so more people can participate and feel like they are a part of the community and know what's going on in this community. I think communication is one of our biggest issues and we need to figure out other ways to address it beyond the Facebook and the newspapers.
All right, the next question is, if you were to meet someone who's brand new to town, what would you, how would you interact with them? What would you do if someone came up to you and said, you know, "Oh, I just moved here yesterday"? You know, what, what would you share with them? And Heather, if you want to start, we will let you.
Okay. I think I would obviously say welcome this meeting, pick a wonderful place to put down roots and that we have a lot of great small businesses, a lot of very, various people that are willing to help if they need anything that they can obviously ask me or, you know, I'm willing to help them anyway. And, like I said, a lot are small town businesses, like our grocery stores and our florish shops and our movie theater and all those places are more than willing to help you given it's not their specialty area. So I guess just welcome and pick a great place.
Yeah, the big thing is just welcome them to the community, let them know what we have to offer. And if they need help with employment, getting connected, you know, we can do that too. It's just a big welcome and, you know, give them a contact information so they have somewhere, somewhere to come back to if they need to.
Yeah, I agree with both of them, you know, welcome them to town and reach out to them, give them your contact information so they have a resource to lean on because in a five-minute conversation, you're not, they're going to have questions about this town, different things, you know, where's a good church to go to, what's a good restaurant to eat at, what, you know, different things like that. And somebody that's lived here for years and are around the area for years, it's, you know, just be a resource for them to feel welcome and invite them to some things, you know. If we go out to eat with a few friends or something uptown, make sure that we, we welcome them and make them feel welcome. Because I know that's a big thing for people, especially new families, if they don't have roots here for trying to get new businesses and maybe somebody not from the area comes in here. It's no different than in college, right? Your college experience can be a lot different between if you have good friends and things to do or if you aren't able to reach out and make friends right away. So the social aspect of life is big in making sure that somebody that comes here, we try to set them up in the best way that they can meet people and... And, and, uh, you know, find some friends and have a good quality of life, so.
I would tell them, welcome to the community, uh, I, and if they need anything, they can come to me and, you know, I'd help them through it. Introduce them to some of the new stuff or the stuff we got in town, you know, like the sports and the parks and the, you know, all that comes with that. So I think that's where I start with.
Alright, and then what things do you feel like the city does well and what things do you think could be improved? Dean, if you want to start?
Um, I think it's kind of hard to come up with this, just off on the spot like this. I think the things that we could improve on is promoting, uh, the flag football and the soccer, the little kid soccer game that brings a lot of people to town. Um, we could improve on that, helping that get bigger and better, um, just stuff like that. Stuff that, um, we're doing good is probably the water treatment plant, um, I think the sewer system, all that stuff. I think the city has done a great job with that.
Uh, I think there's a struggle that we have, kind of goes back to some communication things, uh, you know, there's sometimes events that go on and, and we're not, uh, some people don't know about them, um, and, and they're not maybe promoted the best, you know, we, we at times do the best we can. We think Facebook might be the end-all, be-all, but there's other ways to reach out to people. Um, and I think working together on different things, I've heard, you know, some brief struggles on, on different situations where, you know, some, you know, city council wasn't working the best with somebody else or, you know, economic development, everybody's working together for the same cause. And so I think that, uh, getting some people in there that can share ideas and views, um, would be, would be good. Uh, and I also think that one thing that I think we do okay with, but I think we can do better, you know, this summer when we had the fair and heritage days kind of linked up. I, I think that was a really good, uh, situation, I, I think that it helped bring some people in and support both the fair and, and heritage days. But we need to kind of tie some things together because we are a small town and, you know, if people that come back from an event, they might only be able to come back once a month or, or so often. We need to tie things together so when they come back, they have a really good experience. And then that really good experience kind of stems off, I, I hate, I feel like I'm playing a broken record, but then they, they wanna, you know, move back here or they can see themselves here if we have them have a really good experience. So I think we do okay with that, but I think we can do better, um, at communicating about some of these events. And, and really making some of these experiences a little bit better for people, um, all around, so.
And being on the city council the last four years, I think our city's done a good job with, um, I guess we've got new equipment to move snow. Um, the water treatment plant, as Dean had mentioned, the sewer plant, uh, they're both work in progress, but, uh, gonna help the community. Um, what we can improve on, I'll agree Jonathan said, communications, uh, making things, our events maybe grouping them together, going into one thing's a great idea. And, uh, other than that, just keep moving forward.
And Heather, your answer.
Um, I'm gonna go with what I had said before, the communication aspect, whether it's marketing or whether it's just meeting needs and wants and things of, of the public and the city. And as far as what Pocahontas does well, I think Pocahontas has been a forward-thinking community for many, many decades. Um, whether it's from the generator system, having varied electrical lines, um, coming together to reopen the Rialto and get it going as a state-of-the-art facility with their projector and sound system and stuff. I think Pocahontas comes together when they need to and they forward thinking, sort of just reacting to things when things go wrong. They try to prevent them, um, before they happen, they, they're very forward-thinking.
Alright, so I want to leave some time at the end of this whole shebang before we get to the school board forum for any of the individuals that are here in person to come up and talk with the candidates individually. So this will be kind of just the last question that I ask and it's more so just a chance. If any of you guys felt like there wasn't anything, you got the chance to say that you want to say, or just any closing remarks from any of you, um, now is the time. So Heather, if you want to kick us off for that, go ahead.
I just really wanna appreciate you Parker and the Chamber for putting on this event. I think it was a great opportunity for people to, um, hear what we have to say as candidates. And then for a candidate to express, um, our ideas and, um, some of our information about who we are. Because a lot of us aren't well-known in the community. And so I just really want to appreciate, um, everyone for coming and for, again, you, um, and the Chamber for putting on this event.
Thanks Parker for putting it on, uh, I wanna thank everybody for coming today, taking their time. And, uh, those people that were watching at home, thank you, and, uh, I guess we'll see you on November second.
Yeah, I'll echo that too, thanks Parker, um, Parker's been pretty awesome for me to work with, uh, since I kind of came back here and brought a business back. He's an awesome resource and, uh, I just wanna thank you for all you do. And also say, you know, it's been fun talking with these guys, kind of hearing what they have to say and, and Heather as well from the phone. I don't think you have a wrong choice on, on any, uh, four of us, so, um, it's kind of a good situation. I think everybody has good ideas, is willing to listen, um, and I, I think that it's a, a pretty bright future, it's exciting. I, I, I do hear a lot of young people, like I said, wanna move back, I hear young people that wanna be in positions like city council, um, different elected positions. They wanna have a say in what goes on moving forward, and I think that's a really positive sign. So I think there's a lot of hope and a lot of, uh, e- excitement to come in the next five, ten years. And, uh, I hope that can spill over to, to us, whoever gets on city council and can kind of keep the ball rolling on that.
I like to say thanks Parker for all this and the Chamber, um, thanks for you guys all coming out and listening to what we have to say. I, I appreciate everybody at home that's listening and I hope my views is, is what you wanted to hear, thanks.
Alrighty, so with that, we will, uh, go ahead and call the city council forum to an end. So like I said, if you have any questions for the candidates, please feel free to visit with them. The live stream will be ending for this one, but if you're watching, we'll have the school board one up on a different link. Um, so you can tune in for that and that will start at eleven. So thank you all the candidates for participating and thank you everyone who attended.